When the hour being after seven thirty, I'd like to call the March twenty fifth school committee meeting to order. And we are still operating under the emergency order that Governor Baker put in place just about a year ago now. Allowing for remote meetings so long as access is provided to the community. When we get to the citizens comments portion, anybody who is in the listening audience who would like to make a comment or question, we're going to ask you to put your name and email into the chat. And we don't respond to questions, but we will get back to you in the very near future with the most appropriate people responding. So we will get to that in just a little bit. And with that in mind, we'll go to the first item, which is the Walpole High School Student Report. And we have Grace Ryan here this evening. So Grace, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Good evening. I am Grace and I'm a sophomore at the high school. The high school is wrapping up the third term before Easter weekend. The last term begins on April fifth, the same week students return all in person. Students and teachers are optimistic and looking forward to being back all together. Despite their seasons being moved, the fall two season sports have gotten off to a great start. Everyone continues to be working hard with football at one and one, volleyball at three and three, and track at oh and two. Additionally, spring sports are set to hold tryouts on April twenty sixth. As usual, clubs are keeping busy at the high school. The school newspaper, The Searchlight, issued a magazine this week for the month of March. Film students have finished up their films for this year and the film festival is currently being planned. Mock trial finished up their season a couple of weeks ago and the speech and debate team continues to succeed with many members placing in the last competition on March thirteenth. Student Council is looking forward to participating in the state Student Council Conference on April ninth and tenth with MASC. Also, Student Council is helping to plan senior events, including graduation and the carp raid, which was a big hit last year. Both events are set to be on June sixth. That's all. Thank you for your time.
Sorry, I was muted. Nice job, Grace. That was a really thorough report. And I happen to be a basketball junkie, so I was watching some basketball on the media center coverage this winter. You were quite a basketball player, right?
Thank you. Yep.
Yeah, it was fun to be able to see you. I'm one of those people who likes to watch in person, but it was great to be able to see the team and nice job. So are there any questions or comments for Grace this evening? Thank you very much for being here. You're welcome to stay for the whole meeting. On the other hand, I understand that you're probably busy. The next two items are pretty fun though, and so if you could stay for the recognitions, that would be wonderful because there are some some nice things coming up. But thank you for the report. Okay, the next item is a recognition, a really big deal about a Massachusetts Regional Spelling Bee. Dr. Goff?
Yes, this is very exciting and I'm going to let Mr. Morgan Wick, it's a middle school principal, do this introduction.
Thank you, Dr. Goff. Thank you, Nancy. Yeah, I'm happy to be here tonight to be able to recognize Sonya Nadine as the Massachusetts Regional Spelling Bee Champion. This is a huge deal. This is a part of the Scripps National Spelling Bee Competition Tournament. Regional and state competitions within the Scripps Spelling Bee world. Massachusetts is its own region and so Grace, no, sorry, Grace, I'm thinking about Grace from before. Sonya, I apologize. Sonya has, she won last year's tournament at the school level and then went on to win again this year and went to represent Johnson and Walpole as a town at the regional Massachusetts Level B and had to have a perfect score of fifty out of fifty words spelled correctly in order to beat out the next two competitors who had forty-nine words spelled correctly each. And my understanding of Sonya was that the word curmudgeon was the winning word and we're very honored to have her be part of our learning community. She, in a normal year, would be heading to Washington DC to take part in the national tournament. Because of COVID protocols this year, it's a little bit different. So she will be taking part in some additional virtual rounds with the hopes of being able to be one of the the last dozen or so students who are invited to Walt Disney World this year to compete in the in the bubble at the Wide World of Sports down in Orlando as part of the national tournament. So I know that Sonya is continuing to work and practice her spelling and prepare herself for the next rounds. But I'd love to be able to have her tell you a little bit more about her experience and what her plans are. So Sonya, go ahead and if you want, I'll mute and just, yeah, awesome.
Yeah, so like originally I think Mr. Morgan Wick was saying, so like I would originally go to the National Scripps Spelling Bee in Florida to represent our state, but they might have a couple of other rounds, so I'm trying to work hard to hopefully get into the Scripps on TV. Yeah. And also last year, because of COVID, I was gonna go to states, but since they couldn't do it last year, that's why I'm happy that we were able to do it this year, even though it was in a different situation.
When's your next round, Sonya?
We're not sure yet, but it's probably going to be in about like the first couple of weeks of April.
So some of the states are larger than others, obviously. So some states have multiple regions and Massachusetts is its own region. So when she's competing against other regional winners, it'll be state winners from other parts of the country that she'll be competing against. So excellent representation for our district and our school and we're very proud of her accomplishments and are happy to be able to recognize her tonight.
Thank you.
It's an honor to have you here, Sonya. I just want to see if there are any school committee members who want to ask any questions or comment. I would just say it's quite an honor to have you. Oh, Jen, did you have something you wanted to say?
I was just gonna see if she could spell curmudgeon for us. That's a tough one.
I think it's only fair if you ask her to spell words, she should be able to ask you to spell words, so.
I'm a pretty good speller. You better watch out.
I've been called curmudgeon once or twice, so.
I was just getting proud, yeah.
That's awesome. Yes, and I do, I do think that Mrs. Gayotz might give you a run for your money, but I put my money on you, Sonya. If I was right down to it, I'd pick you. Can I just ask you, like, what are your favorite ways of studying?
Yeah, so like, I feel like for spelling, there's like a lot of different ways to study. So a couple of ways. One was like the three-page PDF that they gave for the school with, so I memorized those words. And then there's like a lot of online resources that you can use. They have a lot of word lists and my parents helped me quiz from that. But I think the most important part is to read a lot of books because like reading has a lot of variety of different books. So I would like write down all the hard words from the books that I'd read and then go to study them later. So that helped a lot, especially in the state round.
That's fantastic. I always just love to see kids find something that really piques their interest and dive into it with two feet. It sounds like you totally have. And I would just say, you make us super proud. We wish you all the best luck. And, you know, I'm sure, I know it's much more than luck. That's really not the right word, but every, you know, you need a little bit of luck too. But I hope your hard work pays off for you. And one way or the other, the Walpole Public Schools is very proud to have you representing Massachusetts. Thank you and thank you for being here.
Congratulations.
Yeah, are there any other people who want to comment? Sounds like Mr. Green might. You're muted, Mark.
I was just waving goodbye.
Thank you very much, Sonya. Thank you for being here. Good job. Okay, our other recognition tonight involves middle school as well. It's the two drama clubs from Byrd and Johnson, so.
Yes, so virtually, obviously attending from Byrd Middle School are grade eight students Riley Schultz and Joey Malone. These students have leads in this year's production of their musical and Mr. Dave Cuzzi will enlighten the school committee on this year's production. And then from Johnson, we have advisor Kim Calendrelli and students Amelia Dursow and Justin Barassi, and they're leads in Johnson Middle School's production. So I'll turn it over to them.
So thanks for having us. So for those of you that don't know, don't know, at Byrd, we typically do a musical. Actually, Dr. Goff was the person that directed the musical and I took it over from her. I volunteered twenty years ago and I don't know how I still am in charge of it. But typically our musical, we have around about a hundred and five kids in the school. At the height of it, you know, back when, probably about ten, fifteen years ago, we had over two hundred kids in it. It slowly dwindled over the years. This year with our pandemic version, as I like to call it, we have eighteen very dedicated students. We are doing high school musical, The Musical, for the first time ever. We spent, we had virtual auditions in December and then we had, we've had virtual rehearsals in January and February and in March, we start our in-person rehearsals. It's a little unique because as Joey and Riley can tell you, we act on stage and then we tell them to go sit down in the chairs because they have to be socially distanced while singing. And then they go sit down in the chairs and sing and they go back up on stage and act. So it's kind of different. This year we're going to tape and put it all together in kind of a digital production. And our hope is to have it out by the end of April. But Joey and Riley, if you'd like to talk about your experience with it this year?
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think being able to even do like, you know, the musical is really big because, I mean, I've been wanting to do it, like, because I didn't do it last year. And obviously Corona hit, so you couldn't really have that like option. And I think me and Riley, you know, both really wanted to do it and I think everywhere, like all the guidelines are really strict about COVID, which is obviously good. So you know that everyone's safe. And it's just, we're just all lucky to even like be able to put on a show this year instead of like skip a year.
Yeah, and it's like, obviously it was like hard at first to like, whether we could like do it or not, and like everyone was wondering if there even would be a musical, but when Joey and I found out it was gonna be like high school musical, we were really excited because we've always like loved high school musical. And it's been fun, even though it's kind of been hard because we can't fully do like in like in-person musical and stuff like that, but like Joey and I are really good friends, so it's really cool that we get to like play parts together, even if there's like COVID guidelines, which has been kind of hard, but it's still been really cool that like we can still at least put on a show somehow.
And I just want to, I'd be remiss if I didn't talk about Ms. Delude, Ms. Young, Ms. Bruno and Mr. Chippo, who are my directors. And Mr. Chippo's in charge of my music and they've done an unbelievable job. I don't know how Mr. Chippo would sing with them virtually. So he did a great job. The kids are prepared and they've been working really hard. So I'm just, I'm really impressed. It's a smaller group and I'm just really impressed with their dedication.
That's awesome, everybody. It's one of those things that people don't realize, all the adjustments that are going on in schools this year. And someday, I think, you know, you guys will be the answers to some trivia questions because people will say, you know, what year was it when Byrd Middle School had to do something unusual? And you'll be the ones that the historians will be interviewing because you found a way to make the show go on and that's pretty cool. And I like the fact that you guys are friends. I think that that probably will be something that you'll write about to each other in your yearbooks or, you know, in the future or something. So very cool, very, very cool. Are there any school committee members who want to ask any questions of any of the Byrd representatives? Dr. Goff?
I just wanted to make a comment. I think it's great that the two of you, you know, participating in this and hopefully that you'll stick with it. It's just such a great experience. I remember doing the musicals when I was in middle school. And then the one thing that I do miss, you know, about this job is not being able to participate and, you know, help direct those scenes. It's just, it's a really good time and you make some, some great friends. So nice job, guys.
Mrs. Genetia?
So in addition to Dr. Goff, I know you have at least three musical theater nerds on school committee at the current time. So we're thrilled that you're able to do a musical and high school musical, I think, is a wonderful choice for this year. I don't know how many montages of teachers greeting students have been set to, we're all in this together since last year at this time. It's probably in the hundreds of thousands. But it's just, it's a really great feel and it's a really great story and message, I think, for right now. It makes sense that you'll have to wear masks because everybody in high school right now would be wearing a mask. So that's, that just kind of fits into the story. I can't wait to see the finished project, product, and thank you to all of the staff who have to work doubly hard on it. I know how much staff effort goes into these productions in a normal time and I can only imagine that it's double or triple the work this year. So thank you for making this happen for our students, especially our eighth graders who deserve to take the stage one last time in their middle school career.
The hardest thing was last year and I don't know if many people are aware of this, but when COVID hit, we were a week and a half out of putting Wizard of Oz on. We had pretty much, we were ready to go and it just COVID hit us and, you know, the high school was literally, I think, putting it on the next day when they shut down. So it was, it was, I felt bad for the, you know, for the eighth graders that didn't get to do it last year and then these kids that are, were seventh graders, now eighth graders. So as you're right, I'm glad that we get to do something for them.
I just wanted to say one thing as well. I really appreciate all the students who are taking the time because it would be easy to say, no, this is too hard. It would be easy to say, no, I'm afraid of being around people. It would be easy for all the staff to say, you know, this is just too much work for us to do this year. But I applaud Joey, Riley, Mr. Cuzzi, all the directors and all the students who are in the show for really sticking it out and persevering and turning something that could be seen as a really negative year and making something truly positive out of it. So I too am looking forward to seeing the finished product too. So thank you, guys. We really appreciate it.
Nice job, Byrd. And it would be nice if, if we could hear from Johnson now because I know we have Johnson representatives here as well. Dr. Goff?
Sure, we have. I'll let Kim Calendrelli take it.
So this year, our JMS Drama Club is gonna do two virtual productions. You know, much like Byrd, we typically have, you know, sixty to seventy students participate in our productions, both the drama production and then our spring thing, talent show in May. This year, we actually have twenty-one students who are participating in both shows through cast and crew. So we're excited to have, you know, these opportunities for our students. We're currently working on a podcast and it's a Sherlock Holmes radio mystery. It's an adaptation of an early Sherlock Holmes short story where Sherlock has to help the king of Bohemia with, with, with an issue and it's this whole plot that Sherlock devises. So it's definitely a fast-paced, fun show for our students. We have seven students in that, in that production. When we wrap production in a few weeks, then we're gonna start rehearsals for our virtual show. And it's called The Search for Signs of Intelligent Life on Earth and it's a quirky TV talk show from an alien. Her name is Valindia and her sidekick Truck. And they are interviewing different characters on Earth and they're familiar characters. We have Dracula, we have Frankenstein, we have a werewolf. So they're just quirky adaptations of some familiar characters. But it's set in a virtual talk show, which is nice because our students, we're still having that time together. We're still having our rehearsals. But it is in a virtual setting, so it's, it's a new adventure for us, but we're very excited. I have Ms. Smith, Mr. Warren and Ms. Burke all on my team and they've just been wonderful. You know, our students are excited to get, to get these productions going. We actually have Sherlock Holmes and Dr. Watson here with us tonight. That's Justin and Amelia. They've come to see you guys tonight.
Well, welcome to both of you. And Justin and Amelia, this is your few minutes, however much you want, of fame in Walpole. So if you want to tell us a little bit about how it's gone, why you're excited about the production or what you think is gonna be really cool about it, now's your chance. So the floor is yours.
So I, I've been, I was really excited when the news came out that we were gonna put on a show because I've been doing the, I've been part of the drama club for the past three years and I was like really happy when we were able to actually put on a show. And even if, like, even though it's a podcast and it's completely different than the usual onstage with everyone, it's a really fun experience to like just be around, like, the kids that I usually wouldn't see because like me and Justin, we don't see each other like during the day because we're in two completely different classrooms. And because we're in the same production, we get to see each other and we get to just like meet new people and like the sixth and seventh graders. And I know when I was in sixth and seventh grade, I, I like had really good bonds with the upperclassmen. And now that I am in eighth grade, I can, I can have some bonds with like the lowerclassmen. So it's just been really fun just to see other people and like in the lower grades, just like have as much fun as I've, I've had in the past three years.
My experience kind of was, I've been acting outside of school, so my, hasn't been in school. But now that I'm joining in school, it's been a lot of fun to meet new people and to meet new friends to have experience with.
You know, you guys bring up a really good point. I think that in, in school, you, there's a lot of academics, but the other things that motivate you are just as important and it's great for kids to find other, other students who like some of the same things that you do or willing to work as hard as you are. So you said it well. I think that it's something to be very, very proud of. And I'm glad, as you said, Amelia, that you're getting the chance this year because you certainly deserve it. And it sounds like you've become a pretty tight group of friends at Johnson. So that's very nice. That's excellent. Mr. Morgan Wick or anybody from school committee? Do you have any things that you want to add?
Three, ma'am chair. It's so cool to have you all here tonight, kind of expressing your experience and kind of echo what I said a little earlier. It is, it is a really unique experience and I remember when I was in high school, we were doing the renovation. And so we did plays kind of off-site in different places and they were different than normal and those are the ones I remember the most. So I think this is a really unique opportunity to find ways to kind of create art in a pandemic. And I would just encourage you, a little later on, we're gonna have the Friends of Music on and you know, as you continue to go into, go along in your schooling, to continue to find that space and that balance to use your talents and share them with not only your friends and your fellow students, but the community as a whole. I think, you know, this in regular times, there's nothing most of us on school committee love more than going to pop site, going to the plays and being part of these kind of things that really kind of flesh out and make, you know, our education system so wonderful and so fun. So I'm glad you guys are finding finding ways to do that and spaces to do that in the pandemic and I just encourage you to kind of keep doing that throughout your career here in the public schools.
Dr. Goff, go ahead.
Thanks to both of you. I'm looking forward to watching the, or listening to the production, should I say, listen to the production. It sounds really creative and I appreciate your dedication and your commitment. That also goes for, you know, Mrs. Calendrelli and Mr. Cuzzi. You know, just being able to think outside the box and I know the time and the effort that it takes to do this and, you know, without you guys, you know, stepping forth and and putting this together, this wouldn't happen. So thanks for doing this for our students. It's greatly appreciated.
Well, thank you very, very much, everyone, for being here tonight. Please make sure that when you are ready to share it with the listening audience that you, you know, alert Dr. Goff or Mrs. Mortally so that we can all tune in to your productions. It's, it's something we're really proud of. So thank you very, very much. And Amelia and Joey and Riley and Joey, it was great to have you here. Oh, wait, I said it wrong.
Justin.
Justin, sorry, Justin and Joey, it was great to have you here tonight and you make us proud as well. So thank you very much.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you, guys.
Good night. Our next item is, we have some people representing the music department here. So I will turn it over to either Dr. Goff or Mr. Han.
I think I'm gonna start this one. Before I begin, Mr. Fleming, I know that you're supposed to be joined by Ms. Batting. And so there is some names in the attendees group I don't recognize. So if one of those is Ms. Batting and you want to just chat that it's you, I can move you over to a panelist. So I know that regardless, Mr. Fleming is gonna be leading us tonight and I just wanted to take an opportunity to introduce Mr. Fleming, who's our K-12 music coordinator. He's new to Walpole this year. He's worked in music and most recently as the band director for Randolph Public Schools. But I'm just, not only want to introduce him, but also recognize him for the great work he's done. It's not easy to be a music teacher. It is definitely not easy this year to be a music coordinator. And it is most definitely not easy to be a new music coordinator and lead a district K-12, but he has done so very well. And I have the good fortune to get to work with Mr. Fleming quite closely. And I'm glad he's here and I'm glad that he'll take a few minutes tonight to talk about the music program and also to be able to speak to Friends of Music. So thank you, Mr. Fleming, for being here.
Thank you for having me. I believe I had a slides presentation so I could keep myself on track and also to help you kind of follow what we're talking about. So if you're not aware, out of the twelve music teachers, five of us are new to our position, four of us new to the district this year. So it really has been quite a quite a challenge to get our, get our feet wet and come in running, especially in this interesting situation. But we are definitely, everybody has really come through and worked really hard. I wanted to give you kind of a context of what it is that we're dealing with this year and how we've responded and how, what the music department looks like this year compared to what it may look like normally. Next slide. So first I want to talk about our guidelines, what the state told us we can and can't do this year and the restrictions we were, we were put under. Next slide. So when we started the school year, the only music making that could occur inside the building was chanting and string and percussion playing. Anyone else who wanted to make any other music had to be outdoors, which worked well in September and October, but as it started to get cold, it got a little nerve wracking. Interestingly, the Harvard study that most of the guidelines were based on actually recommended eliminating ensembles and teaching music theory and music history and things like that. We are so grateful that Walpole Public Schools did not follow that guidance and decided to be brave enough to say, we can find a new way to do our ensembles versus versus essentially demotivating the students by not giving them music-making experiences. So we definitely appreciate that. Next slide. And about the middle of October, they laxed their guidelines a little bit and they allowed wind playing indoors at 10 feet. They advised slash recommended that we use instrument covers and special instrument masks. Those range anything from a mask with a slit in it to masks with holes, with flaps of fabric that come over and whatnot. We in Walpole decided that we were going to use both of those. So we, through COVID funds, purchased bell covers and special instrument masks to make sure that we knew that we were being completely safe. Unfortunately, singing was still being left outdoors. By the time we got all of our equipment, it was around Thanksgiving when we were finally able to get back indoors and play as ensembles. Next slide. And then finally, on March 1st, through a lot of pressure from state organizations, the state laxed again and allowed singing indoors. They are requiring masks, so this time it was not optional. There's a 30-minute limit to singing together. And they as well have to be at least 10 feet apart. Next slide. So our responses in the district, the ensemble responses were kind of a go-with-the-flow response. We definitely have tried to make as much music outside as we possibly can. I know our elementary teachers were also bringing the kids out to the parking lots and the fields and the sidewalks, trying to make as much music as they possibly could. I know in Johnson Middle School, they purchased, through the help of Mr. Morgan Wick, some ukuleles. So the students in general music were able to have an opportunity to make music despite the restrictions of them not being able to sing or play recorders or any other type of things, things like that. Our elementary teachers focused a lot when they were indoors on a lot of the rhythmic aspects. I've had the opportunity of observing one of our teachers. And the students have gotten really good at chanting in a way where they almost sound like they're singing, but they never get to the singing point. And it's been a really good response by the students and by the teachers to try to find that happy medium and their movement to music. Their rhythm reading will probably be the best six years from now when they're at the high school that we've seen in a long time, I imagine. Next slide. Of course, because of all of restrictions, the importance of the music making at home has really increased. So we have relied pretty heavily on a lot of technology that allows us to do that. There's a few programs out there. For instance, something like Smart Music, which the students can practice along with something and then record themselves and submit it to the teacher. Same with Sight Reading Factory. Screencastify, a lot of our teachers have used that to have students record themselves and submit it for feedback. Music First is a suite that I know Bird Middle School is using pretty prolifically in their general music classes. We've also been using it at the high school. It has everything from digital recording software to notation software to a general music curriculum, all at the fingertips of the students at home, which has been really nice. And then there's an innovative piano course, which allows the students to continue their piano learning at home, which is something that we were definitely worried about because not a lot of the piano students have access to pianos at home. All right, next slide. Some of our teachers have done an amazing job of finding a new perspective on what performing looks like because the idea of a concert with the parents coming and sitting in the auditorium and then taking the kids out to ice cream after, pretty much, you know, it probably will be another six months to, close to a year before we get to see that. Ms. Fitzgerald, which I think some of you have had the opportunity of seeing, put together a virtual performance, virtual performance with some of her sixth graders, which was great. It actually, she did it, did it in such a nice job that the kids are lip syncing indoors. And some of the high school students were upset that the middle school kids could sing inside when the high school kids couldn't. And I had to explain to them, no, they're actually just lip syncing, but it was part of trying to put together a visual in addition to a musical performance. So that was a really creative way to address that. Both of our orchestra teachers have put on concerts this year, but they've had no audience in them. So they have recorded the concerts in the auditorium with the help of Peter Faro and Jim Dutilio, getting a actually very high-quality video performance that then they were able to send home and share with the family. So although it's a little awkward to have a piece finished and hear no applause, it really was very exciting for the kids to finally get to perform and do something that they knew they were sharing with their parents and family members. Finally, the high school music department does have on the books now a concert that we're going to be doing on May 19th. It'll be a completely outdoor concert. It'll be a giant celebration of hopefully the return of live music in Walpole. And for the kids, this is gonna be a huge deal because most of them have not had a chance to perform in front of people since last December. So December 2019 to May of 2021 will have been a very long stretch for some of them to wait for this opportunity. On the next slide, I actually have a clip from Ms. Anderson's Johnson Orchestra concert for you.
I think Billy, you have to unmute yourself.
Thank you. And next slide. Of course, it works now when you don't want it to. And then a few highlights of some things that have come out of this year. At the high school especially, we've had to focus a lot on team building and trying to hold these programs together and working mostly on an individual basis with the students. We had 30 students accepted to different honor bands this year at the high school that ranged everywhere from the semtspa to the southeastern districts, junior and senior. And we even went as far as having three students accept, qualify for and accepted into the Massachusetts All-State Festival Bands and Orchestra and Chorus. Sorry, it was Band and Chorus that made that this year, which is really good undertaking for a school program of our size. The ensembles have continued to meet, even though we did a semester program this year. And so all of our programs will be continuing through the spring despite the fact that our classes don't meet anymore. One of the greatest things that's come about through this year is because of the desire to not feel like people are on an island, the collaboration level in the department has just been through the roof. Some of our Wednesday afternoons spent, you know, elementary teachers and middle school teachers and high school teachers learning how to create drag-and-drop slides on Google Slides for the students to be able to practice their learnings at home and things like that. It really has been, it's been quite an impetus for us to make the K-12 connection in the department, which from what I gathered, pretty early on, the department was excited to have and I think is gonna hopefully continue to thrive with over the next however many years. You know, you guys can handle me. And that's everything about the department. The next thing, I don't know if Holly is on, but I wanted to introduce the Walpole Friends of Music.
I don't believe she's here, Tim, so you'll have to take it from here.
All right.
I know Mr. Buckley might be able to speak to some of that as well.
Yeah, awesome. Well, my jazz band students will be excited to know I got to improvise tonight, so. So Walpole Friends of Music is an organization that is technically not connected to the Walpole School District, but definitely the majority of the work that they do is tied to the Walpole School District. They are essentially exactly what they call themselves, which is they are Friends of Music. They are supporters of music in Walpole. They support the music programs in the schools through their service, through financial support. They love to throw ideas at us all the time about ways we can get to more people and get more people to experience the great things that are happening in the music programs here in Walpole. This year alone, they have purchased class sets of ukuleles, second set of, second-class sets of ukuleles in all the elementary schools to allow them to be able to have students take ukuleles home if they wanted to. And I think Mr. Holmes has taken them up on that. And some of them are able to hold multiple classes using the ukuleles without worrying about, you know, who's cleaning what. Extra Tibanos, our Bird Middle School now has a brand-new set of timpani, which is the kettle drums in the orchestra that they were nice enough to split the cost with the district on. As well as all of our music teachers at the middle school level received PA speakers to be able to amplify themselves and any recordings they can play for the students, which I know for some of them was one of the most exciting toys they received for the year. I'm not sure what else you want to know about the Friends of Music. They meet every, first Tuesday of every month. The situation they are currently in is that every member of the Walpole Friends of Music, minus one, does not have a student in the Walpole Public Schools anymore. One of them, her daughter is a senior. So as of the end of this year, she will also no longer be connected with the public schools. So one of the major things that they are looking for is support from the school district to help recruit new members to the Friends of Music so this group can continue to thrive and continue to support Walpole in the years to come.
Welcome, Tim, and thank you for being here tonight. I have a feeling some of my fellow school committee members have some comments that they want to add, so I'll start there.
Through you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Tim, and welcome. This is a tough crowd. It's a very musical crowd amongst my colleagues. And you jump into a great tradition in the Walpole Public Schools and the exemplary music department. I am profoundly excited to hear about performing outside in the spring. And just, you know, it's a culminating act, right, of the study of music and performance in general is the buildup to being able to showcase all that you've taught our students. So that's incredibly awesome to hear. And I'm excited we have some new folks, you know, jumping in feet-first within the pandemic and that you've shown as the scrappy department that you are, the ability to think outside the box and evolve and continue to deliver the musical coursework we have to our students. And I think that's really exciting. And, you know, unfortunately, it didn't really work out with people's schedules, but, you know, it's good that we, as a school committee, are acknowledging the Friends of Music, which is, like many Walpole organizations, a very quiet organization that does good things. I saw on Facebook, Jim Holmes took all of his gifted ukuleles home on a PD day, after a PD day, to label them and number them and put kind of fret markers on there. And that's a great thing. And it's great we can do things like that because of the generosity of our kind of wider musical community. I know through you, to Mary, we want to make sure this is, you know, the last week of March, March being Music Month, among many other things. We want to make sure we get maybe the Walpole Friends of Music's information out through our, in a weekly kind of school committee report and really encourage folks who may be listening or folks who may be reading that report to think about volunteering. We have a really great core group of folks who for many, many years have been the people who take your ticket at Pops Night, the people who in the past have allowed Walpole to do semtspa and district auditions because they volunteered all day to be able to have Walpole be the place to house that. Hopefully, a new middle school might be able to house some regional auditions as well. But I'm excited to hear more about your program in the future. You know, not too long ago, before COVID, we had the entire high school chorus at a school committee meeting. So I'd love to maybe do a little more of that, especially in the spring. That's kind of where we do a lot of these great things. But, you know, thank you for coming. I think it's just important to acknowledge the Friends' generosity and hopefully shake the tree and find some new friends of music perhaps. But thank you and good luck.
Go ahead, Kristin.
There's not a lot to say after Bill speaks. He kind of covers everything. But, you know, just wanted to welcome you. As Bill said, there are a lot of us who are kind of music geeks in high school and even in college. So it means a lot to us. So it's nice to have you here and hear about all the different things that you were able to do this year to still try to make some things work. So I appreciate that and I'm glad that we'll be able to hopefully see a performance in May because we missed Pops last year and it's always nice to see, you know, as Bill said, that culmination. So thank you and welcome.
Anyone else? Go ahead, Sean.
Yeah, just to add on top of the gratitude. So thankful for the music program this year and your perseverance and creativity in coming up with new ways. I know my family was, you know, really blessed to have Ms. Fitzgerald put together that performance. It was a highlight to be able to showcase that. And it was really, you know, well done. So thank you and thank you to the music department across the board, you know, really K-12, for making music still happen. Thank you.
Now, the only other things I would add, again, beyond the welcome, Tim, is the concert on the 19th. Do you have to limit the number of attendees? Or is that something, I'm guessing that the answer is yes.
I, I, the first answer would be yes, but actually our hope is to work with other folks to get the sound projected. So have some microphones set up. So it, the only, we don't want the only good spot to be like the front section. We can get people spread out as far as we can get them, then we can get more people in there, which is our ultimate goal. So we want to amplify whatever performance we're putting on so we get more people in the audience.
That's great. That's great. And you know that probably the Walpole Media Corp would be glad to record it and then it could be one of those things that you could view on demand or on Saturday mornings live, I guess, if you wanted to. The other thing I wanted to ask is, oh, I forgot my other thing. Oh, the Friends of Music. I think it might make sense if we put something in our report that Mary Mortally will send out tomorrow to just say that, but make sure that somehow you include how would a person who wanted to join in on the next Tuesday night meeting? Like who would they reach out to or what would the link be? So we would just have to give them some information because I think, I think it's really important to help some of these volunteers who have been doing this for a very, very, very long time. So I think that we just need to get the information so that it can get included in Mary's report.
They have put together a one-page kind of breakdown, if that's something I can, if you want me to share with someone.
Yeah, I would share it with Mary Mortally, please. Okay, at the superintendent's office. Thank you very, very much. Any other questions or comments for Tim? Great job this year. Thank you.
Thanks, Tim. Greatly appreciated.
Okay, so our next item is the next stage in the strategic plan work that has been done recently. Dr. Goff?
Yes, as you know, our annual strategic plan meeting was held on February 24th of this year. So included in your package, you'll find changes made to the strategic plan. So they were redlined, thank you, Mary, and also a clean copy. So that's why I have thick packets tonight. Assistant Superintendent Bill Han and- Assistant Superintendent Bill Han and the goal chairpersons are here, and they will provide information about the goals.
All right. As Dr. Goff just mentioned, I'm joined tonight by Mr. Bemis, who will speak to Goal One, Mr. Dearborn, who will speak to Goal Two, Mrs. Jariah, who will speak to Goal Three, and Mr. Connor, who will speak to Goal Four. I'm going to give a very, very brief overview of the strategic plan process. We model our strategic plan, as many other districts do in the state, after Desi's recommended Planning for Success model. This is intended to be an inclusive, hands-on planning process designed to build district and school capacity while working with the not only the building, but the overall community for support. The goal of our strategic plan is a long-range direction for the district, something that is clear and specific that in that in the action plans identifies priorities for improvement. All plans are, our plan is a five-year plan improvement plan, and we we do each year consider priorities for implementation and we focus on for that specific year. Our process, ultimately, the strategic plan is intended to be a more broad document, but it it is important to note that the strategic plan absolutely informs the superintendent's goals, leadership council goals, the school improvement plans in each of our buildings, which in that's important because those school improvement plans then inform the principal goals and individual professional and student learning teacher goals. This year, we were so excited that we had over fifty participants. And those that did participate on February twenty-fourth, we did so virtually. We were concerned that we would have less participants this year, but as usual, so many administrators, teachers, support staff, parents, students, and community stakeholders showed up to participate and contribute to the priorities of our strategic plan. I, as I noted, we have four chairs here today, but before I turn it over to them, I just want to point out a couple of things. One is that we made two significant changes to two of our goals, Goal Two and Goal Three, and I'll let the chair speak to those changes when they present. And Goal One and Four stayed consistent with, of course, the each year our strategic plan team identifies priorities and might make some minor changes to the goals. And finally, I just want to make one note is that one of our goals moving forward strategic plan is that we don't just meet once or twice a year, but that our goal groups meet in small groups, and it's already happening on a grand scale. We've had each of our goals have met as small groups to contribute beyond the day of strategic plan. And with that said, I will turn it over to Mr. Bemis. I just want to make one final note, and Dr. Goff mentioned this. To represent each of the goals, you're just seeing a single slide with the overall goal and the the objectives related to that goal, but please take note because the chairs will be speaking to the priorities and some of the changes that you will find in your packet. So thank you, Mr. Bemis.
Thank you, Mr. Han. Good evening, everyone. Before I start, I just want to thank all the members that participated on Goal One. We had great conversations throughout the morning on sorry, on February twenty-fourth, and I just want to thank everybody for all their hard work and participation and contributions to the work that we were able to accomplish. As you can see on the slide, the Goal One is to provide engaged curriculum, differentiate instruction, and ongoing assessments for all students. The first objective is to create consistent, coherent, and sustainable curriculum maps for pre-K through twelve. You'll notice in your in your packets that there are two highlighted action items. One is highlighted in green, and that's highlighted in green because that was put on hold, unfortunately, due to the school closure a year ago, and we are on track to have that as a priority again this year, which is to review and revise curriculum review cycle, which includes identified areas of improvement in order to strengthen instruction. We have one other action item underneath objective, the first objective, and that is number three, which is that we would like to dedicate consistent professional development time and resources to sustain curriculum revisions and also to clearly communicate curriculum review cycle and curriculum maps with all stakeholders. You may notice that that's a combination of a couple of action items that the group decided that we could we could combine there and make that into one action item for this coming year. As I move on to the second objective, which is to provide personalized learning through flexible instruction and practice that fosters growth for all students. We also have two action items highlighted in in yellow. And our priorities are action items two and three, and we would like to continue to dedicate professional development time to support tiered practices, the coaching and the consulting and the collaboration, the peer observations and workshops using qualitative and quantitative data to inform our instruction. And the other priority underneath this objective is to utilize student-centered learning pedagogies and personalized learning experiences that connect students to the real world. And after the school closure, we're very much looking forward to those small groups working together in our classrooms and back to the way we were instructing before COVID. The last objective is to utilize quantitative and, sorry, qualitative and quantitative data to inform instruction and improve practice, and we have one action step that is identified as a priority for next year, and that is to create and identify common formal and informal assessments. And the group really felt that that is something that we can accomplish by the end of next year. We had, again, great conversation throughout the the three or so hours on the twenty-fourth. And again, thank you to the group that worked on Goal One, and I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time. Or I can wait till the end.
Right. I think if it's okay with the school committee, we'll go through each of the goals and then take questions at the end.
Sure.
They prefer to.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, everyone. So I have the pleasure of co-chairing Goal Two. Like Brian, I'd like to thank everyone that participated on Goal Two. And one of the the changes that that Mr. Han was speaking about was that this year's strategic plan, we have combined Goal Two with the old Goal Three. And what that was looked like, there was a dedicated goal around social emotional development and citizenship. So this group came together and we we found that both of the goals to be equally as important, but as the work that we did in years past on Goal Three, we found much of it did fall into the social emotional well-being and realm of that piece of student development. So it became, I wouldn't say easy, but it became a natural blend of these two goals to come together to to develop one new Goal Two. So the goal, as you can see, reads to foster and strengthen social emotional well-being of the school community in order to develop responsible, engaged citizens. So what we really did was take the first kind of the goal from the social emotional well-being and added in order to develop responsible, engaged citizens to combine the two, which was a good, as I said, a good blend. We have four objectives in that area. So the first one is identify and provide professional development and resources for families and students and staff. In that goal, one of the things I think is is a little bit difficult when you're doing some of this work is figuring out what to highlight because we kind of want to do a lot of the work at all at once. And in that goal, we don't have anything highlighted, but that doesn't say that there isn't work going to be done in that objective. So you would see action steps one and two. There's going to be surveys of families. There's a lot around the castle standards. We're developing educators and students to to develop those standards and be able to to use those in their classroom. So they're not highlighted for this coming year. It's still, that work is going to be going on throughout our district. In objective number two, it is embed consistent social emotional learning practices across our curriculum. And that is, in that particular objective, we're highlighting action step number one, and that's to continue assessment of staffing levels to support students' needs for S E L and to address emotional, behavioral, physical health and allocate additional staff as needed. So that really kind of looks, it it matches kind of goal, the objective number one as well. As we're doing more professional development, we want to empower all of our staff to be able to work around the social emotional realm of students. So the more the work that we do there is the more we'll be able to kind of bring that out and be able to work in a math class and in a history class, and that being their social emotional well-being developed, not just by counselors. But we are continuously, and I know the school committee has been very supportive of that in the past, of looking at addressing the the staffing levels of of developing students' social emotional needs. In objective two point three, as you can see, it's engage, educate, and partner with students, families, and communities. And the one that we highlighted there is the the development and continued development with Spark Kindness. We have done some work in the past with Spark Kindness, but it's something that we want to continue. And the principal, the elementary principals and I were just on a call the other day with the Multicultural Book Initiative, and they've connected with Spark Kindness. So I think that's becoming a natural kind of partnership, and I think the more we can, as a district and a community, can can partner with Spark Kindness and kind of bring that, as we've heard stories of what they've done in other communities, to bring to Walpole would be tremendous for our families and our students. So we're really looking forward to that. And the final objective, two point four, this is really where we brought in a lot of the citizenships from the old Goal Three into to Goal Two. So it's to develop ethical students who value multiple perspectives and demonstrate responsible citizenship in a school and community. And here, we're really looking at trying to find ways of increasing student engagement after-school activities. We're looking at, you know, trying to get more opportunities for students not to not only to participate in things at school, but what else can they do across our community after school and volunteer opportunities? That that's something that is really, that was a big part of Goal Three that we brought into this particular objective. We're also looking at exploring funding for stifling the community outreach position in each school. So somebody that could kind of oversee that so it doesn't get lost in in students and no matter what their age would be or how we connect the community to our schools and things that we could do. We're looking at kind of having a point person in each of our schools or each of our levels to be able to do that. And finally, to continue with the history and social science frameworks, as they they come into our our district, it sounds in our work with the middle school and high school, they they sound like they're in a great spot with that, and much of the work they're doing, they have a great kind of plan moving forward at the elementary level. We are beginning that process. We're having a lot of conversation, and we're using a lot of that in literature. But that will be continued as we keep going to develop and to to match those state standards. That is the new Goal Two. And I guess we'll be taking questions if you have any at the end of the time here. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. So first, I am really excited to share Goal Three. Goal Three is around diversity, equity, and inclusion. This was exciting work. It was starting from scratch on the strategic plan. Our group was made up of members truly committed to this work. I was very impressed that with everyone's busy schedules, we were able to meet a total of four times to continue this really thorough, thoughtful discussion. So Goal Three, and I also want to thank John O'Leary and Jacenia Castro for helping me facilitate Goal Three as the chair. So Goal Three is to demonstrate high level of cultural proficiency as evidenced by active promotion of diversity in all aspects of instruction, learning, and participation, thus ensuring equity for all and full inclusion of members of the educational and greater community. It was very clear when we started this work and and we used a model of backward design that we came up with three themes that we wanted embedded in this goal right off the bat, and that was around focused leadership, culture and community, and instruction. So it made our work easy, and then we were able to break up in subgroups and continue that work and then bring it all back together to solidify our goal. So as you can see, objective number one around Goal Three is around focused leadership to analyze and promote diversity, equity, and inclusion in Walpole Public Schools. And we talked a lot about what this would look like. And we determined that action step number one would be to complete an equity audit of our district, which reviews population data, attendance data, discipline data, academic performance data, recruitment and hiring process practices, mentoring and staff development, and policies and procedures. That was our number one priority for for this goal. So as you can see in the documents in front of you, that our equity audit is what is highlighted. That's really going to drive the next two action steps. So the next action step from that audit would then be to determine the structure dedicated to diversity, equity, inclusion, and we really want to use the findings to help us with what that would look like. And then the action step number three would be to create a creation of unified district language around our missions and goals. And that would be to ensure communication is very transparent and out to all stakeholders. Objective three point two is to is around culture and community and is to create a shared community vision of belonging where everyone feels accepted, valued, heard, and encouraged to participate in their authentic selves. Our action step surrounding objective three point two is really around partnering with existing groups or programs to create a shared vision and mission. So enhance our community partnerships with PAC, with CPAC, our EL PAC, the Multicultural Book Initiative, Spark Kindness. I know that Jacenia Castro talked a lot about the affinity groups that we already have up and running, but to to continue to create those, you know, multicultural community events and workshops on relevant topics. A big piece of this action step is to also analyze the audit results and solicit information from staff to to determine what professional development opportunities we would like to see come out of this. And then also to develop a system to track the data that we would like to find that I mentioned from the previous objective. We would also like to make sure that we can have very clear, consistent communication. So a communication plan we would like to have developed. And that that can include a webpage around D E I newsletter, email, so on and so forth. And our third objective is around infusing diversity, equity, and inclusion within the curricular and co-curricular activities and instruction. And this and one of the biggest things that we've already committed to as a district is to enhance our libraries and our classroom libraries and to diversify them. And we have done a phenomenal job. I can speak specifically to the elementary through our PACs, through the commitment that our that the district has done through the Multicultural Book Initiative. And we want to make sure that we're taking these phenomenal resources and truly embedding them and embedding them to make sure that they're part of the curriculum, that all of our students see themselves in our in the curriculum and continuously examine the way we're delivering that. So we really want to look at, you know, really our instruction through a lens of D E I. We want to provide opportunities for curriculum development, expand co-curricular activities in the affinity groups that I mentioned earlier, and again, provide professional development opportunities related to curriculum development, and that's incorporating MBI and the media specialists, curriculum coordinators, you know, at all levels, DESI, and then Metco, Spark Kindness, PAC, and all other groups in our community. So it was really exciting work. It actually didn't feel like work. We really enjoyed the the conversation and we're we're really excited to share this with you.
Thanks, Gary. Thank you, everybody. Dr. Goff, Mr. Han, school committee members, and my fellow principals. While the goal for the strategic plan may not be the fanciest goal out there, we do feel like it was super important to be able to, you know, review some of the things that we have planned to help make Goals One, Two, and Three happen. Because our goal is to ensure that the facilities and resources support student learning and well-being. We didn't have too too many changes as we look to move forward our five-year plan. One of the things we did want to note is that in our first objective, one of the things that we added based on the pandemic is to effectively provide for the safety, health, and welfare of all members of the Walpole School Committee. We felt that this year has certainly been historic in so many ways that the inclusion of the word health and to to continue to promote that for our students and our staff and our community, we felt that was really important to add that as part of our action step as our, the objective, sorry, for this year, sorry, for the rest, for the next, as we go through the five-year plan. And objective, we're focusing on action step two for the near, for the next year, where we're reviewing, implementing, and providing for ongoing CDC-recommended pandemic cleaning, disinfecting, ventilation, and P P E protocols that are deemed necessary and appropriate for the district because we know that even though we have for the district, because we know that even though we have all of our students coming back to us in the next two weeks, that this is not mission accomplished, that, you know, everything is not fine, that we still need to make sure that moving forward from April 5th through the summer and beginning next year and beyond, that we continue to do the best job that we can to ensure that our students and staff remain as safe as possible in the future. And Objective 4.2 is to identify and plan for future-ready facilities projects. So this represents the ongoing work of the middle school building project that has been meeting pretty much about every other week. It's kind of, it's going to be a little, the meetings will be a little further out now, the building meeting, but that's not to say that the central office staff are meeting weekly with Compass in order to make sure that everything we need to do gets done. And so as of right now, we had included every module of the planning process for the strategic plan, but we have since completed the first three modules. We're just at the end of the third module, which is why we decided to focus our action steps on this objective to completion of Module 4, which is the schematic design of the building, which is what we're moving into now. And Action Step number two there, which is the completion of Module 5, which is funding of the project. Now, while these are two action steps that are super important, and we know it's part of our five-year district plan, this work is really going to be done in the next eight months of, you know, our work here in Walpole as a town, as administrators, and working with Compass on this project. So let's see. Objective 4.3, we didn't change at all, and we're identifying, securing, and responsibly managing sustainable funds for all school department needs. And so our focus for this next upcoming year is Action Step 1, where we're really looking to build community support for the middle school and high school projects and secure related funding for both. One of the new action steps, not really new, but we did make some changes, is we'd like to revisit the high school feasibility study once funding is available, because last year we had hoped to do more with that, but once COVID hit and we had to close the buildings, taking a look at the high school and doing a feasibility study to see what we could do to help expand programs and work on the structure there was put on the back burner, so it's something that we felt we needed to add. While it's not going to be our main focus, it is one of the new things. And probably my favorite change, and I don't know if it is for you guys, but Action Step 5 is where we continue to facilitate understanding of and support for operating budget that meets the growth needs of students, because we have found that with the project that is ongoing, that one of the most important things that the people in the district need to know is what are we doing, why are we doing it, and why is it important to do? So to really communicate and be as transparent as possible, and you can see it in the work of the administrators downtown and the website set up, so anybody can see, you know, what the funding looks like, what it's being used for, and, you know, where we're planning to go with this. And then just talking to people about how we get there and making sure that they understand what it is that we're doing and why, and not just like voting blind, but making sure that people know this is where the money comes from and that this is exactly what it's going to be used for. So like you said, just like everybody else, I did want to thank Mike Frischa and David Barner, who are the other co-chairs of this committee, and everybody who were members of Goal 4. Thank you.
All right. I know that was quite a bit of information, and I had people hold their questions, but I'll now turn it over to you, Nancy, if the school committee has questions for myself or for any of the chairs.
Sure. Just to be clear, we're hearing about this tonight, we're not voting it tonight, correct, Dr. Goff?
Sorry. Correct. It's more of, yeah, it's an overview. I didn't put it in as a first reading, just because I know that it's a culmination of all the stakeholders in terms of the strategic plan. So each group, and I think there may have been school committee, there were school committee members on each of these goals. So just the redlining to show you what has been, what was taken out and what was combined. That's why you'll see that there's a lot of redlining, because as the chairs mentioned, the goal, two goals were combined, and then Goal 3 was a brand-new goal. So you won't see as much, the goals are the same for 1 and 4, because it is a five-year plan, so just your priorities tend to change, but we ended up really doing an overhaul on Goals 2 and 3.
Great. So it's my, my thought was, we will put this back on the agenda for the April 8th meeting so that we can give our stamp of approval to this as a committee, and we'll ask some questions this evening, but in between now and April 8th, if people have questions that come to mind after this evening, or just an area that they want a little bit more depth of understanding, we can reach out to the administrators between now and then, but...
Yeah, you can, sorry, Nancy, you can, you know, send them to Bill or myself. That might be the easiest way.
Exactly. But that being said, are there people who have questions or comments that they want to make this evening? Sean?
Yeah, this is, you know, a really impressive document that lists some great goals for the district, for the staff, for the students. And I really loved one of the themes that kind of went throughout it was an intentional partnership with students and families, and getting input and having that reciprocal relationship in place. And I love that, and I love to see that. I think the community will really benefit from that, and the students to, you know, to know that the input is valued. It is, you know, a really broad plan. Is there any concern that, you know, the breadth of it taking on something so important as addressing diversity, equity, inclusion, you know, as well as new SCI standards, that kind of SEL standards that, you know, it kind of flow into that, but are also a big lift as well? And then just working on the curriculum mapping, that seems, you know, significant for any period of time. Just wondering if you could speak to that at all?
Yeah, Sean, it's a terrific point, and Dr. Goff and I last year went to a conference that was specifically about that, about strategic plans are meant to be broad documents that cover a great deal. And then, as I noted, then the real specific work gets done at, you know, in the goals of the school improvement plans or in leadership. But they did talk about how important, that the number-one mistake they see across the state with districts and strategic plans is they try to accomplish everything in one year. And so this movement to prioritize action steps and goals is actually meant to combat that, that we don't get overwhelmed and really feel unsuccessful at the end of the year, like we didn't accomplish anything, and really just to identify what are some areas that are going to be our main focus. And of course, you always touch on different aspects of these action steps, but they said exactly what you just said, that this can get overwhelming and really eat you up if you don't say this is part of a five-year process. And they say even when you're in year three, you're part of a five-year process, and to really identify. So that's our goal, is to encourage people to build goals around our priorities, so it doesn't feel overwhelming and it feels like something we can accomplish together. So I hope that answers your question, because it's a really important one, and I'm glad you mentioned it.
Right, yeah, exactly. I was, you know, thinking just the burden and the stress and, you know, what it feels like when you don't accomplish something. So I love that. I did have one specific question around curriculum. You know, the science, technology, and engineering standards was the only curricular area that was specifically mentioned here. There was just general mapping and curriculum overview, and I was just wondering if that was an indication that you feel good across the board, you know, K through 12, that, you know, math, ELA, and, you know, the fairly new history, social sciences standards are, you know, in a good place?
That, yeah, and I, that's also a good question. So I don't want to speak too much, because I wasn't part of the full conversation, that group, but a lot of times, the reason why the science and engineering get a little bit more attention now is because those standards are some of the most newly updated and cross-curricular. But no, I would definitely not say we are all set in other areas. And as of today, I sat in a meeting developing math PD, and we glanced, you know, we reviewed back to the strategic plan, so you're going to see all elements of our curriculum embedded in most of the areas of these objectives, and in some cases, action steps. So that necessarily wasn't purposeful, maybe that's something we'll take a look at to see if we even want to mention, you know, that science and engineering, but I think that's more of a reflection of, you know, one of the most updated standards.
Thank you.
Carrie?
I just wanted to comment on the development of the new Goal 3 on diversity, equity, and inclusion. I was the school committee member that was part of that group, and I want to acknowledge Carrie Ruggiero and Jacenia Castro and John O'Leary for some really great leadership of our group, as well as everyone who participated. We had a really remarkable team and a really great process, and I couldn't be more pleased with how this goal turned out in relatively short fashion, although, as Carrie mentioned, we did meet several times. I think this goal is ambitious, but I think it is appropriately so. And, you know, one of the truisms about diversity, equity, and inclusion work is that it's never really finished, so we can't say that we will have mastered all of this by 2024. But what I like is that we have acknowledged that a lot of the steps in this goal are ongoing, as well as listed some very, very concrete action steps with very real deadlines that are going to put us on a firm foundation and guide the rest of our work in this area. I think that's important. And I also think it's important to note something that is at the bottom of the goal. In a note that says, "An inclusive culture starts from the premise that everyone in the school, students, educators, administrators, support staff, and parents should feel that they belong, realize their potential, and contribute to the life of the school and community," because I think that emphasizes that DEI work is never focused on one particular subgroup of people. It's for everyone, and it benefits all of us, and we all have to be part of the work. So I just, again, want to reiterate how pleased I am with our process and where we have landed for now, and I'm excited about where this is going to go.
Thank you, Sean and Carrie. Anybody else? There really is an awful lot of good work here, and I think that some of us probably need just a little bit of time to reflect on some of the comments that came along with the words, but I think that what we've got here reflects another good year of work, and to me, it was amazing that in the middle of all the other things that were going on, people were able to take a few hours on February 24th and really be thoughtful in terms of the work that was done. I think it's reflected here, and as a number of you have said, some of the groups have met a few times since then, and it's high-quality work, so thank you. And unless there are other questions or comments from school committee members, I would say let's use the next two weeks to think about, are there any pieces that we would like some more information about? So thank you very much. And Dr. Goff or Mr. Han, do either of you have anything you want to add before we move on to the next item?
No, I'd just like to thank all the stakeholders for their hard work. Like you said, Nancy, it's a lot of time and effort, not just, like you mentioned, the day showing up. I think the hard work sometimes is after the fact of putting everything together, so a lot of work, and we really value their input and their feedback. I mean, the group creates the goals, and the action steps, so thank you.
Great. That being said, you're up next, Dr. Goff, with the superintendent's report, and thank you for being here, administrators. You're welcome to leave.
Thanks, guys. Appreciate it.
And put your pajamas on if you choose.
Thanks. I'm not offended. You can go. Thanks. Many of us, I'd just like to start by saying that many of us have expressed sadness and fear about increased acts of racism, and have looked to our schools to use our voices to combat discrimination and take a stance against bigotry. Sadly, last week, another act of violence took the lives of eight people, including six Asian-American women. While the exact motivations of this most recent incident may not be entirely clear, what is clear is that there has been an increase in anti-Asian hate incidents during the pandemic. Since the start of the pandemic, violence against Asian-Americans has increased by Schools play a crucial role in educating all children to be tolerant, kind, and celebrate our differences. We reaffirm our commitment to being an anti-racist district and community that effectively and equitably educates, supports, cares for, sees, and welcomes all of our students and their families. We will continue to work together to provide a welcoming, safe, and supportive environment for all who walk through our doors. Tomorrow, my superintendent's notes, I'll share with you some resources from families from Massachusetts General Hospital Center and the National Association of School Psychologists and American Academy of Pediatrics. As a reminder, Monday, April 5th, our schools K through 12 will return to full in-person learning. Just as a reminder, physical distancing in the classrooms and other educational spaces will now be at a minimum of three feet, but the lunches and snacks, however, remain at six feet in social distancing. There were some commonly asked questions. If you remember, those were shared with families on March 12th in my superintendent's notes, and that could be found right on the district website, and I'll make a note of that tomorrow as well. We will continue to work collaboratively with our nurse leader and our Board of Health to continue with the necessary safety protocols in order to minimize risks. Contact tracing and quarantining will continue per our protocol, and it's important to note, as we have done all year, we will be prepared to make any changes at each level as needed. In preparation for the shift, just as a reminder, Thursday, April 1st will be an asynchronous learning day, and there's no school on Friday, April 2nd. Please be reminded that breakfast and lunches for pre-K to 12 will continue to be provided for free. That's through the end of the school year. For those that have any questions about transportation, they can contact Kim Porier, and I'll put that link out, that'll be in the school committee notes, as well as my notes tomorrow. And any questions about extended day, you can contact Devin Clifford, and we'll get that email address out as well, and I know that he sent information out to all of the families for those who need extended day. We are also pleased to announce that Walpole Public Schools has been awarded a Governor's Emergency Education Relief Early Literacy Screening Assessment Grant. Now, that's a mouthful. Literacy Screening Assessment Grant. That was for $24,581. This grant will be used to provide early literacy screening assessments for grades K through 3. In addition, the grant will support professional development to all elementary school staff to analyze and read the data reports from the screening assessment tool to support student learning and literacy. We are grateful to the state to support this initiative and its commitment to use valid, reliable, early literacy screening assessments to inform decision-making and planning in early grades. We also wanted to give a special thank you to our K to 5 English Language Arts Coordinator, Shannon Finley, who led the effort to apply and write this grant. And in terms of upcoming events, with the middle school building project, we are going to be holding our next community forum on April 7th at 7:00 in the multitask here. And you can see on this screen, the project team will update the status and timeline leading to the town meeting this fall. There'll be an overview of scheduled options, and that... And that will include, uh, estimated schedule, budget and funding, as well as next steps. And there'll be a, there'll be a Q and A. And I'm not going to say anything more about school building project, uh, middle school building project, because, um, we have Brian Jarvis here, um, from Compass, um, who will, um, I don't want to steal his thunder. So we'll wait till we get to that part. But we're really getting into the thickest things for this middle school building project. And it's, it's really exciting to see it come into, into shape with the design. So, um, he'll be showing you some images of, um, plans for our new consolidated middle school.
Hey, everyone.
Good evening, Brian. Glad to see you.
Brian, would you like me to share? Do you want to share your screen? What's easier for you?
Uh, I can give it a shot.
Okay.
So everybody, the, the purpose is to make sure that all of the school committee members feel very well informed about where we are in the project and, um, give you guys a chance to ask any questions, um, as we move forward. Cause as Dr. Goff just mentioned, we have hit some important milestones. But I'll turn it over to you, Brian.
Thank you. Um, so this, this, um, good evening, everyone. This is a update. Um, we've given an update last week to the building committee. For those of you that are on the committee or might have watched that, this is, you've seen some of these slides before. Um, so as the chair has mentioned, just giving you an update of where we currently are. Uh, we're starting the schematic design phase. Uh, so we'll go through a quick update on the preferred schematic report or PSR that went into the MSBA at the end of February, uh, which included, uh, an updated space summary. We'll talk through that a little bit. We'll have a refresher quickly on ineligible costs and how that plays out into a potential reimbursement rate for the town and eventual town share, uh, for the taxpayers. And then just finish with a quick update on the timeline, uh, where we are and now and where we want to be by, by the summertime. So I'll try to get through these quickly and then we can answer any questions. So preferred schematic report, which is the last deliverable, um, that we submitted to the MSBA at the end of February. Uh, we just received comments back yesterday, so updated the slide. Uh, we're going through those comments. No major issues, uh, with the review by the MSBA. Um, the one thing that they did bring up though, and we'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute, was they are enforcing the science lab guidelines. Uh, they have guidelines for all of their schools, elementary, middle school and high school. Um, and we were looking to possibly save some square footage in the building by, uh, reducing some of the square footage in the, in the science areas, mostly around prep rooms and the chemical storage, based on the current curriculum. Um, however, they do want to see the building maintain their guidelines, um, over concerns of they don't know what the future might bring with changes in curriculum or changes in materials. Um, so not a big issue, but that's just an update from what was presented to the building committee last week. Uh, but a positive was that they are looking at the third gym space, uh, for alternate PE or the OTP as eligible for reimbursement. So they did not push back on that. Uh, we're over their guidelines as far as square footage, but where it's strongly supported by the ed program and a lot of the opportunities that this space can provide, uh, for the students, uh, they feel that it is an eligible space. So that was some good news and that'll factor in later on in one of the other slides. We also met with their facility assessment subcommittee this week, uh, which is a dedicated committee that basically reviews the plans at this stage and comes up with recommendations for how they think that the plan could progress. Uh, they look at things such as sustainability, the initial layout of the building as far as its orientation relates to the sun and how it's situated on the site. They look at initial layout for things like access and, um, universal access to the building for, um, all user groups. Um, so that was a really good meeting. They had a lot of positive comments. Uh, they have been more critical in, in this meeting, in the last few meetings on some of other projects that have come through, but they had a lot of positive things to say. I think overall, uh, it was really, um, well-received. And this is the group that ends up recommending, uh, the current design to the MSBA board, uh, for approval and to move into schematic design. So, um, that recommendation is going in this week and the MSBA board meeting is on April 14th, where they'll approve the project to move into schematic design. Um, although that board meeting is on the 14th, there are some things that we were able to start working on. We've been doing that in the background with TAPE, um, and the district's representatives at the working room. Just a quick refresher, this is the B1 concept that was selected. So this is the new building for a consolidated school on the Bird site between the existing Bird and Washington Street, tucked into the corner, uh, kind of where the current drop-off loop is. Um, you're probably familiar with some of these plans, but a three-story model with the core academic spaces, um, to the bottom, broken into three teams on each floor for sixth, seventh and eighth grade. And then, and a separated, uh, uh, community space for, uh, the main office, the cafeteria, auditorium, gym, central kitchen, um, and the library. So, uh, good layout for the building. The MSBA was actually really impressed with it. They, they thought that this layout really fit with the educational program. They had a lot of positive things to say about the neighborhood structure. A lot of good feedback so far from the MSBA. What we want to update you, and again, we presented this last week to the building committee, was making everyone aware of where we are currently with the size of the building and how that relates to costs and, and what that might look like moving in, uh, to town meeting. So just a quick refresher, when we submitted the first deliverable, the PDP, the development program, we were about 174,000 square feet, 173,818. Uh, we were looking at some reductions to get that down a little bit. We made a couple modifications to those prep rooms that I mentioned that now have to go back in. We relocated and, and reduced the size of the principal's office and eliminated one of the teachers' lounges slash workroom, which was somewhat redundant. We got it down to about 171,000 for the PSR. That's what went into the MSBA in February. Um, but that was still about 26,000 square feet over the MSBA guidelines for square footage for a middle school of this, this enrollment. Their guidelines were about 144,000. Um, and how does that compare? What we really wanted to show people was how's the current layout of Walpole compared to some of the other schools? And this chart down at the bottom actually shows all of the MSBA's middle school projects for enrollments over 800 students over the years. So large middle school projects have gone through the MSBA. And when you look at this chart, the way that you can compare these schools is actually by looking at square footage per student. Cause that takes into account the enrollment of the school and how big the building is to fit that enrollment. So while the building sizes might vary, it all depends on the enrollment. You get an average square foot per student. So the average of the middle schools across all middle schools of this size for the MSBA is about 171. When we originally did the 170,000 square feet at the PSR stage, we were up at about 189 square feet per student. So, one of the largest, if not the second largest middle school that would have gone through the MSBA. So we felt concerned, um, that one, that we get pushed back from the MSBA, two, that we get pushed back from the building committee and the community and create a, create a school project that was going to be, um, not affordable for the citizens of Walpole. Something to point out on this average though, to make it a, a little bit more comparable to schools you may be familiar with, the new school in Natick and the new middle school in Braintree, neighbors of Walpole, roughly similar enrollments. Um, their average school size is 182 square feet. So that we, we felt was a, was really a target of where we felt that, uh, the folks of Walpole could, could see a school size, uh, for the town. So how are we going to get there? The district and the, and the representatives on the project went back and really worked hard, um, to come up with, with creative ways to keep, to keep the program, but help to reduce and make the square footage a little, a little more efficient. Uh, we dropped the size of classrooms, 50 square feet down to 900. The MSBA allows a range of 850 to 950. Most of the middle schools that we've been involved with in the past few years have gone at the 900 range. Some of them have gone down to 850. So we thought that was an easy compromise. Uh, we reduced 1,400 square feet, um, of tech space. And we think that's, we're going to be able to combine that program in with the media center. So we're not really losing the program, we're just losing physicals, physical space. Uh, we reduced the size of the central kitchen, the cafeteria. This was actually a big point. We were able to get the central kitchen size and the cafeteria size to, to zero out with the MSBA. So at the end of the day, we had no overages with the MSBA. And on the review of the, um, PSR that came back yesterday, the MSBA, um, was agreeable to that, uh, situation. Didn't find anything ineligible at that space. We kept the third gym space. We thought it was important and we just got back that it was eligible, so it was great. We were able to reduce one of the music classrooms with the thinking that they would be able to use the space on the auditorium stage. And we felt it was really important to keep an auditorium, so we moved forward with an auditorium as well. With a lot of these modifications, we were able to get the square footage down to 159,000, much closer to the MSBA's guideline. And by doing that, we went from the 189, you see at the bottom in yellow, down under, um, 180 square feet. So that 159,000 came up to 177 square feet per student. So again, um, not quite the average, but we're also including a full auditorium and the third gym space, which we thought were very important to the curriculum and the ed program, as well as the community. Got it in at 177, which is actually lower than the average of the Natick and Braintree and a little bit closer to the average middle school. This has gone up slightly with the MSBA's insistence that the science prep labs go back in. So as of today, we're just under 161,000, so a small change. Uh, but we're still, as you can see here, under the 163, which equated to 180. So right now, we're probably about 178, 179 square feet per student. So, um, again, relatively, uh, on par, uh, middle school with your surrounding neighbors. And the reason it's important to talk about square footage is that's one of the driving factors when the MSBA looks at this project from a funding and reimbursement perspective. The square footage and the size of the building drive the overall cost. The square footage of certain spaces may or may not exceed MSBA caps. And all of that goes into their calculations when they determine, uh, what are the eligible costs that they're willing to participate in for some of the reimbursements. So our goal is to make the building as efficient, as efficient as possible. Um, and the team, we think that we've got there, that we've gotten there. The building committee, um, is supportive of this, of this option with the full auditorium and the central kitchen and the third gym space. Um, so this is the option that we're moving into schematic design. A quick review of MSBA ineligible costs, I'll go through this quickly. Basically three ways the MSBA looks at costs and deems them to be ineligible. Either categorically ineligible, so in this case, an auditorium is categorical, categorically ineligible for a middle school. It's not ineligible at a high school, but for a middle school, the guideline for MSBA is with a cafeteria, uh, which, which the team did not feel was a fit for, for the Walpole program. Any costs that exceed caps, so for instance, there's a cap on OPM costs or designers, design costs at 10%. Any, any design fees that go over that 10% are ineligible. Um, there's a site cap work on the project. So site costs over 8% of the total construction cost, anything that's over that 8% would be ineligible. Um, cost for spaces that exceed guidelines, so this is where I was talking about earlier with the gym. So in the MSBA model, they give you 6,000 square feet for a gym. We're at about 8,200 square feet because we're adding that third space. There's potential that those 2,200 square feet would have been found to be ineligible. Um, however, based on the ed program and the utilization of that space, the MSBA is going to find that to be eligible. But that's, so that's at their discretion, any, any of those spaces that exceed guidelines. The square footage is typically up to the MSBA's review. It's really dependent on how well the district supports those spaces in their ed program. So for instance, we're a little bit over in our core ac, core academic spaces by having a few more classrooms because of our team teaching approach and because of the gym. But because of the way the ed program was set up, the MSBA is finding those spaces to be eligible. And just some more examples of category, categorically ineligible, things that would pop out from some of the other options that we've looked like, looked at in the past, like swing space. If we had to do temporary classrooms for renovation, the swing space cost would have been eligible. If we had to build a synthetic turf field somewhere, that would have been ineligible. Site cap cost, we already talked about, but the big one here to pay attention to in costs exceeding the cap are building costs exceeding the $333 per square foot. I'll show you a slide in a minute. So the issue here is that the MSBA reimburses the, the cost of construction up to $333 per square foot, regardless of what the market price is for construction. They're not saying that you can build a building for $333 per square foot. They're just saying they're going to reimburse, they're only going to participate in the cost up to $333. So we'll get to that in a minute. Um, and then cost for spaces that exceed guidelines, we already talked through this, the extra gym space, um, and core academic spaces, both were found eligible in our case, and that was good. Just a quick re, refresher on reimbursement rate. So the MSBA reimburses the district at a stated rate. So it's base rate plus incentives. Walpole's current base rate is roughly 48%. Um, however, it's only the base rate, it's only the re, reimbursement for eligible costs. Um, and not all project costs are considered eligible. So it's not, it's not 48% of the total cost of the project. It's 48% of what they deem to be eligible and they start from there. So the effective rate of what the town actually receives is less than that 48%. So the MSBA starts with all the project costs on, on a project. They take out whatever's ineligible, they lower that, um, basis for their grant and then they reimburse you their, their rate of that amount that's left over. So although our stated rate's 48% and we might be able to get up to 51 or 52%, the MSBA is going to end up taking out the ineligible costs and reimbursing us 48 to 51% of whatever's left over. So this is just quickly with the math. You start with your total project costs. You take out ineligible construction costs from the MSBA, you take out ineligible soft costs, leaving you with total eligible costs. Then you take those total eligible costs, multiply it by the reimbursement rate and that gives you your estimated maximum grant. So what's the estimated amount that the MSBA is going to reimburse you? Um, also note though, that they continue to audit that estimated maximum grant all the way through the project, design all the way through construction. We submit every cost in the project to them as we go through the project and they apply their, uh, ineligibility matrix to it. And some things might get kicked out, even though initially we thought that category might be totally eligible. But there might be certain costs that come up that they deem to be ineligible for whatever reason. So your estimated maximum grant is the most you'll ever see and most likely you're going to see less than that at the end of the day. So when you take your total project cost at the, at the beginning of the process and you take out the, minus the estimated grant that they give you, you're left with the town shares. So how much does the town actually have to fund? So based on our current square footage of the buildings that we submitted to PSR for the B1 concepts, when we did a draft total project budget for the MSBA, which calculates projected ineligible costs, we come up with a total project cost of about 116 million. But by the time you take out all the ineligible costs that the MSBA, um, considers to be ineligible, they base their grant on roughly 60, 67 million of that 116. And then they reimburse you a 40 or 50% of that 67 million, leaving you with a town share at the end of the day of about 80 million, about $80 million. So they reimburse you about $30 million, $35 million and a $116 million project, leaving the town share about $80 million. So that's an effective rate of 31%, not that 48 to 52 that we started at. It's 48 to 52 of this $67 million. Does everyone follow that? We also looked at the option, um, prior to the building committee meeting of, what if we didn't do an auditorium? What if we did the cafeteria, hopefully elevating our eligible dollars a little bit? Um, it is a slightly less expensive option from a total construction project. Um, it does increase the maximum facility, the basis for the maximum facility grant. So you saw this was 67 million, this is about 71 million. Um, the estimated town share is 74 million, just over 74 million and effective reimbursement rate of about 34%. So relatively close, but again, that's with a cafeteria, not a full auditorium. So the biggest driver in the, in coming up with those ineligible costs, as I mentioned before, and this is a quick graph, there's a lot to see in here. This is the MSBA's chart of all their school projects over the years, starting back in 2009. The first dot on this chart, the first orange square, is the Norwood High School project. It was built for under $250 a square foot. The orange line is the average cost of construction for school projects up until current day, highlighted in the yellow to the blue line, which is when we're anticipating to bid. And as you can see, over the last several years, escalation of construction for school projects has gone up dramatically. So these orange dots are actually bill projects and the actual construction costs of those projects. The orange boxes are bids that have come in. They just haven't finalized their updated budget with the MSBA. So this is what's happening right now, these orange boxes. The blue boxes are current schematic design estimates. That'll be the next estimate that we do. And the pluses are the PSR estimates. So that's where we are. So we are the blue pluses and you can still see that these costs are going up. The biggest takeaway on this slide is the green line is what the MSBA reimburses districts at, $333 per square foot. So this delta, this red line is where projects are at today. We're the blue dot right now, where projects are at today and where they're expected to be by the time we bid and where the MSBA actually reimburses you. So you're basically giving up almost $300, $270 per square foot that they're going to take right off the top from that total project cost and drop it all the way down. So they're going to take that delta, if you start at 120 million and there's a delta of that $300 per square foot, they're going to drop that 120 million down by that delta to start with and start taking their ineligible costs from that point. So it's not a Walpole pro, problem. It's just that it's the way the market is and the way the MSBA is currently. Um, all districts are going through this, but this is one of the biggest drivers for ineligible costs. But as you can see, the current project that we have for Walpole is slightly below average in cost for where other school projects are. So we feel that we have a very efficient building at a very cost-effective rate. So we talked about that slide with town share. We did some tax projections, uh, with the town's finance department. Um, we looked at a $75 million share, which was the cafeteria. And we looked at an $80 million share, which is the current B1 option. And we looked at an $85 million share to be conservative. You know, if something changes or we get a, a bid that's higher than expected, and what does that mean to the average taxpayer? The town ran this option based on a 30-year level. The town ran this option based on a thirty-year level debt borrowing at three and a half percent, to be somewhat conservative, they're borrowing in the one to two percent rate range right now. Um, and again, these costs are based on the current estimate that we have, which is the PSR estimate that was submitted at the end of February. When you apply that to the average single-family assessed value home in Walpole of five hundred and fifty-six thousand. That creates a a yearly tax increase of four hundred and twenty-three to four hundred and seventy-eight dollars, depending on what the share ends up being. So roughly four hundred and fifty dollars for the average taxpayer uh in Walpole for the current B-one option. And the other takeaway from this slide is the difference between the cafeteria and the current. Current option of a full auditorium for the average taxpayer is about twenty-seven dollars, the range is anywhere from. Roughly twenty-three dollars, thirteen dollars up to about sixty dollars um to eighty dollars for the highest end, so. For about twenty to a hundred dollars, you're getting it, you're getting an auditorium um across the tax, the whole tax range here. Um, but for the average taxpayer, it's about twenty-seven dollars difference, um, so we think that that's actually a lot of added value. Uh, that'll pay off over time uh from the district and the community's perspective. Um, not only in the use by the school department, but also the community and for potential rental income. But overall, we felt that 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 right now, the projected task impact. Um, is actually, we feel in a pretty reasonable range considering the size of the project. And then quickly, uh, so our goal is to get some schematic design done uh in the next several months, we're looking to submit that to the MSBA by the seventh. Of July, which will get us uh on target for an MSBA board meeting that they have at the end of this August. Um, that board meeting is where they will actually. Um, approve the project to move into scope of budget, scope and budget agreement, which is the fifth module, the funding of the project. And from August until town meeting is where the town will do all its final negotiations to get a final. Scope for the project, the final budget, a final reimbursement rate. We'll know the final town share. Um, obviously before a bid is had, but we'll know what the MSBA is on on board for. Reimbursement and what an estimated town share would be, we'd be able to present all that meeting at a town, town meeting, and eventually at a town ballot. And then just quickly, what's schematic design, it's roughly thirty percent of the design, uh, we have more in depth with programming of all the spaces, traffic analysis. Code analysis, sustainability, design, uh accessibility. Actually, room data sheets, so at the end of schematic design, you'll have a room layout of every room with what the furniture and all the built-in and everything is gonna look like in every space. Um, we have to talk about project delivery system, if we're gonna go contra- uh, construction manager at risk or design bid build. We'll have a updated construction estimate, this is the estimate that the MSBA is gonna base the total project budget on, we'll have that total project budget. We'll define a maximum reimbursement rate with the MSBA, and we'll lock in a project schedule, we'll submit all that to the MSBA. Um, by the fr- by the seventh of July. So that's it, I'll stop sharing, I can put it back up if you have questions, I know there's a lot of information quickly. Um, but that's currently where we're at, uh, we're on a fairly accelerated timeline with the MSBA's board meeting, they they kinda had a curveball this year. Uh, due to COVID, I think they had a one less board meeting than normal, so. We're pushing the schematic design up slightly so we can hit that August. August board meeting and have all of these information finalized before town meeting, we don't think it's a. The right move to go to town meeting without having it finalized, even though it might just be a rubber stamp process, we'd rather have it all done and signed and delivered and be able to present that. If you have any questions or all of us would be glad to answer. Where do we begin?
Three, Madam Chair, let's do this thing. Um, I make a motion that the school committee request the select board place and sign a special warrant. For November the second to twenty-twelve to call a special election. For the purposes of funding a new combined middle school project in the town of Walpole. Um, someone like to second, I'd love to discuss the reasons for my motion.
Second. Okay, we have a motion by Bill, a second by Mark. And his intention is just to open the the door for commu- you know, for questions and communication. Um, in general, this is um a chance to ask any kinds of questions, but we do wanna know. Note that we are gonna take a vote tonight to um to ask to do some of the official steps that need to be taken. Bill, do you wanna talk first?
I shall, I'll be quick, um, Madam Chair, just thank you to you, uh Chairman Breen and uh Ms. Gayotitz for your work as um being members of our commu- uh committee on. The school building uh committee, but really tonight, we we pivot a- and uh we've gotten to the point where we began to engage. The wider community about the need for this project, um, and this that was. Um, by way of explanation for my motion, November the second is the traditional federal election day. Uh, it is two hundred and twenty-one days, ten hours and twenty-five minutes uh from this evening. Uh, and I believe it'll give our community the greatest amount of time possible for us to transparently dialogue with them. Uh, Mr. Jarvis's presentation this uh this evening was incredible, we're excited to get that on the website quickly. But I think it will allow us not to rush, but to to telegraph to our community what we're trying to do, so um for those who may say. Being sneaky, we're moving too fast, this gives a tremendous amount of time. For everyone to get up to speed, you know, from all walks of our community about what we're doing, and this really locks in. Um, our ability to get this done, and I wanna underscore, as I think we always should, that. We get really a once-in-a-decade shot at this project, and so many people on this Zoom. Uh, uh, you know, before us right now have worked so hard, I think, you know, we owe it to ourselves to do this in the most transparent way possible. Um, and in a way that allows as many people as humanly possible to be able to get the information they need. And make the dis- uh, the decision about a way to go from there, but I think this will allow us to conform to all the MSBA timelines. Um, still be in, as I see Mr. Jarvis nodding his head, still be kind of on construction uh goals. And I think uh November the second is is the best time to do that, and just kind of for folks at home. Uh, school committee can't put anything on the ballot, can't request. Uh, uh, debt exclusion override for our projects, so we we now turn to the select board to ask them. Uh, to join with us in this project, and um, you know, it's exciting, we're pivoting, so. That's all, I have no questions.
Mark.
I wanted to add that Brian and Compass and Tape A. And even the folks at the MSBA, this has all been a very professional experience for me, it's really, it's really been a joy to be part of it. Uh, one thing, if you guys recall, I brought up at one of our workshops a number of months ago. The business of cost, and and I can tell you. That these school building meetings and so forth have been very cost-benefit analysis-driven as we've gone along, that's really been. I think kind of the at the heart and soul of it, as Brian has gone through this thing and mentioned, you know, the square footage per student. And kind of an honest assertion as to how much the uh the auditorium is gonna cost, and you know, what's reimbursable and what's not. That's really been uh at the core of the conversation, and um. So it's, but it's, to me, it's been a very transparent thing, it's something I feel very comfortable. If somebody wo- were to wanna speak to me about uh, you know, how this has transpired and how it's unfolded, it's it's really been, it's really been a nice thing to be part of.
Good point, Mark. Are there questions from Sean and then Kristen?
Um, can I ask a building design question?
Sure.
Thanks, um, so I was just looking at the second and third floors, um, and I'm not exactly sure what. Um, kind of in the middle of the second floor, I think it's labeled C U D, maybe? Something I wa- I was just curious about what that space was.
Second floor, you said?
Yeah, kinda just above your mouse, the brown space, right there.
Um. I'll have to loo- I'll have to look up, I don't know exactly where this.
See that's the counseling office, isn't it?
Yeah, I think this is at the top of the stairs on the second floor. I think there is some type of guidance up there.
Okay, and then on the third floor, um, it would be directly above it, I see that art room, but then there's a unmarked space and then tech.
This this green space?
Yeah.
Yeah, so this is another one of the um. Kind of a, kind of a tech space, this space actually um might be getting, might be getting reduced. Uh, but this right now is one of the um like voc engineering spaces. Um, that's kind of up in the air of how they wanna program that, if that might slip into the library or not, so we're still working through that a little bit.
Okay. And then that white space that's adjacent?
Here, that's actually open, so that's a, that's a open to the outside.
Okay.
This is like a small courtyard behind the front entrance, so that was uh some of the square footage that we could uh kind of maintain, this is a low roof here, so. We were able to reduce some of the square footage on the third floor.
Okay. Great, that's good, thank you.
Kristen, go ahead.
Um, just along the lines, I think, of sort of what Mark said, and I think we talked about this. Maybe before one of the first community meetings. Is really, you know, like some kind of graphic or something that kind of shows. The cost and that, you know, cost benefit, you know, two buildings versus one maintenance. I kind of feel like people are gonna need to see it all in one thing. And then along those lines. You know, I saw that in your list of square footage, you know, there was a line that was listed that failed. So I kind of feel like as part of this discussion in some way, and maybe I'm getting ahead of myself, but just kind of thinking through this. What does it mean if we fail? Right, I think we need to start to have the conversation as well about, like as Bill said, this is sort of a one chance that. Doesn't come up, and if it fails, what does that mean? You know, and I, so just thinking about. I know, I maybe getting ahead of myself, but kind of watching the meeting from the other night and some of this discussion. How do we outline, what's that cost-benefit analysis of, you know, moving two buildings into one? Some of these other things that we've all outlined, you know, the revenue we could get from renting the auditorium, et cetera, but then also. If this doesn't pass, what does that cost look like? Is it still maintaining two old buildings, is it, well, now if we still wanna do this, it's a hundred and sixteen million? So I just kind of feel like, you know, thinking through some of these other pieces, and again, maybe this is. Early, but you know, as Bill said, we have two hundred and twenty days to to think about. How to address some of these questions that might come up. You know, oh, it's COVID, it's, you know, there are a lot of reasons why people might be uneasy now, but. If this is our shot, you know, how do we. Communicate that this is the one time to do it?
Yeah, I would, I would agree, the the presentation to the community moving forward, especially by the time you get to town meeting, is gonna be a summary of all of those points. Um, just so people understand, I think, one, when we get there. You know, the cost-benefit analysis of this project um compared to maybe not doing it now and putting it off.
Right.
Um, I think is gonna be a huge factor, but and I think on its own, the merits of this project, I think right now, I think is in a good spot, so I think if you compare it to. Other local communities, and you're showing yourself on that graph of, again, you're not. Over and above what other schools are doing, but you're not, you're you're in a good range there, I think that's also a s- a strong message.
Oh, agreed.
Sean.
Sorry, thank you for double dipping on the questions.
No problem.
Um, three, I was just, you know, thinking about things that would um. Help the the community and, you know, I I love the access to the PowerPoints. But an actual like shortened clip like Brian just gave us, like if there's a way to cut that out of tonight's meeting. Um, I don't know if that's, you know, legally possible to do, but it's just something to give the community. Um, something that's more accessible, um, and, you know, really easy, um, and straightforward to see what's going on. Um, you know, if that's not possible, if it is possible to do like a, you know, another short video clip. Also, just something that's easy to circulate, um, that's accessible for people, it's not gonna take them, you know, an hour um to participate in. Um, and, you know, can be shared easily with a text link or something. Um, just to get the word out there about, you know, just how positive this project is.
Well, that's a good point, Sean, Mark?
Well, I think there's a plan for a spring town meeting. For me to put something together, or actually Brian to put it together and to me to narrate it. Um, to that effect, for the for the public's notification for the spring town meeting, so.
Yeah, I think that that's fantastic, but again, that's gonna be accessed by, I mean, that's gonna be accessed by the voting population. Um, you know, at the time, it's, you know, there'll be some turnover by the time the fall comes, you know, but just so people reach out to their RTMs. You know, their RTMs are the ones that are gonna cast a vote eventually, but, you know, if they're. You know, hell-bent on not having this project go forward because it raises taxes, you know, we would need the general population to. Step in and encourage their RTMs, this project is, you know, well worth the cost. You know, we are behind it, um, and generate that level of support to overcome obstacles that might lead to Kristen's uh point about contingency planning.
Yeah, I I was part of a couple of conversations recently with some people who used to be very involved in the schools, but their kids are now grown. And um was surprised to know that some of them had, who were very, very involved people. Had no idea that this was going on because we haven't reached them yet. So I do like your idea, Sean, of having something that we could send to them as opposed to. Waiting for them to come to our website, that's that's the difference uh between the two. And um, you know, I think that what what is presented at town meeting presents us with another opportunity to reach out to people. But um now is the time to start thinking about all of these things, I think that the idea of finances. Becomes important, I think that some of the previous. Information that was provided, we didn't have the the information that was just given to us tonight and the building committee last week. So it, um, it, I think it takes some of the fear away, I think people feel like, I don't know, but it sounds like there's no way I could afford this. And to see the impact to the average taxpayer. Sure, it's it's real money that we're talking about, but this is also um, uh, uh, uh. An investment that hasn't been made in the school district in sixty years. We haven't built, over sixty years, we haven't built a new building, um, so it's, you know, those are the conversations that need to advance. Brian, you?
And so just to add to that, so um, we are sending out a flyer to all residents, um, that should be out uh by the end of this week. Um, they should see it in the mail uh to everyone's, everyone's door uh beginning of next week, middle of next week. Um, with the information about the upcoming community forum. That they can get to the website and then um get onto the community forum on the seventh, so. Uh, it has the website for the project, so they can get there, see all the prior information that's out there. Get the information about the forum and hopefully attend the forum and have a chance to ask questions.
That makes sense. Jen, I think I saw, did your, was your hand up?
Yeah, actually, I was gonna make a suggestion relating to maybe getting something into the newspaper, but. If we're getting stuff to everybody's house, that serves an even, I I think that's an even better way to make sure we reach everyone. I just was thinking other ways where we could put information that we may not be reaching, some of the parents who have kids in schools who may be getting it. From the pack or um other places, just another thought, because I know we can write articles and get them put in the newspaper pretty easily. But I love, I love the idea of sending something out so that every resident gets them in their mailbox, that's fantastic.
You know what, that is a good idea, though, because I do think that um. Everybody gets the hometown weekly now, and I do think that they are appreciate when people help out by providing some content. So it would be worth, it would be worth sending the information to them, um. Because, you know, some some people in the communications field feel like. In order to to get an effective message, you have to tell people. I forget what the number is, but seven times or something like that, in order to really um have done your job, so that's not a bad idea at all. Any other questions or comments for Brian? We have a motion on the floor for moving forward with um setting. Setting the dates so that people know, this has to get voted twice. It gets voted at town meeting in the fall, and it gets voted at the ballot box. And the motion suggests that we would use the first Tuesday in November. And the motion suggests that we would use the first Tuesday in November, which is a traditional election day. At this point, I don't know of anything else that would be on the election ballot. Um it would be like the same day that Boston would be mo- voting for their mayor. But um, you know, at this point, I don't know of anything else that would cause us to have to vote, but we would be sort of working towards the same goal. We would work towards a town meeting vote. And that would be the third week in October. And then two weeks later, we'd be going to the ballot. So that would be the thinking. And I think that, that your motion, Bill, was to make sure that people feel like that we've given them plenty of time and notice to say this is coming. And um and, you know, to, to get our, our communication team rolling on, on getting information out. Okay, any other questions? If not, we have a motion and a second, and I need to do a little call vote. Um. Bill?
Aye.
Jen?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Kristen?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
And myself, Nancy, yes, seven zero zero. Um I would just say, Brian, I know that you and many of the professionals have been working to do a, a, a fast schedule, but you kept us on task over and over again. We really appreciate it because um this, this need is here. And the process is involved, but it would be great to just keep going at the rate that you're going, so thank you. But thank you also to our administrators who um have been able to drop everything and keep us going and then get up the next morning and make sure that the schools are operating too, so we appreciate that. Anything else related to MSBA? Okay, best thing we can do is finish up this meeting and uh let everybody get a little sleep. So um the next item is subcommittee. Thanks, Brian. And I don't think we had any subcommittee meetings since the last, is that correct?
No, that's correct.
Okay, um that gets us to citizens' comment. If there are any citizens here to comment, which I don't think there were last time I checked, you need to put your name in the chat immediately. And if not, we're going to keep moving, are we okay?
Yeah.
We are up.
There are no attendees, no citizen.
That's what I thought. Okay, so we have some warrants and minutes to approve. Sean?
Yeah, I would like to make a motion to approve the following expense warrants for the amounts listed in your packets. Uh warrants are two-two-one-zero-three-seven, two-two-one-zero-three-eight, and two-two-one-zero-three-nine.
Second.
We have a motion by Sean, a second by Carrie. Again, I'll poll the committee. Bill?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Kristen?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
And myself, Nancy, yes.
I'd also like to make a motion to approve the following uh payroll warrants for the amount listed in your packet. Uh the warrant is two-one-three-eight P A.
Second.
Again, we have a motion by Sean, a second by Carrie. Bill?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Kristen?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Myself, Nancy, yes, seven zero zero. And we have some minutes to approve.
Three, Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the March eleventh, twenty twenty-one school committee meeting minutes.
Second.
We have a motion by Bill, a second by Kristen. Any discussion? If not, I'll poll the committee. Bill?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Kristen?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
And myself, Nancy, yes. And with that, you're up, Mr. Breen.
I would like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion by Mark, a second by Bill, final vote is Bill?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Kristen?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
And myself, Nancy, yes. That will close us out. The next school committee meeting is April eighth, and there will be this community forum that we will all be helping to advertise on April seventh. And were you gonna say something, Mark? Or you're just waving? Goodnight, everybody. Thank you.
Goodnight.